Monday, January 12th. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in all, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Mayor Virchell.
Here.
District one, Morsette.
Here.
District two, Yakup Rad. District three, McCormick.
Here.
District four, Weber is excused. District five, Hoggatt.
Here.
District six, Vanslo.
Here.
At this point, anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the council on any item that is not on the agenda is welcome to at this point. So if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the council, now is your time. Seeing no one, we'll move on to consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
To approve the regular meeting minutes of December 15th, 2014, and the special council meeting minutes of December 16th, 2014. To approve claims for payment in the amount of $1,146,886.47. A detailed description is available in the Clerk's office on request and is posted on the city's website. Contingent on payment of any outstanding debt owed to the city and approval by the Police Department approve the issuance of five regular operators licenses for the period January 13th, 2015 through June 30th, 2016. Additional operator license application information is available in the Clerk's office on request. To approve the 2015 contract for animal shelter services with the Animal Humane Society, Woodbury. To approve the renewal application for a secondhand jewelry dealer license for J.R. Habrek located at 210 Locust Street for the period January 13th, 2015 through December 31st, 2015 contingent on approval by the Police Department and payment of any outstanding debt owed to the city. To approve the appointment of Todd Braebeck and Mary Kershaw as election inspectors as recommended by the Republican Party through December 31st, 2015, with the additional consideration that they may also serve as special registration deputies or special voting deputies as needed for election-related duties at the Christian community home or community-based residential facilities after training has been completed. To approve engaging Clifton Larson Allen to perform the 2014 audit with the additional language recommended by the Finance Committee regarding choice of law and venue for litigating disputes. To authorize the city administrator to finalize the purchase of a new Sharp copier document system at a cost not to exceed $11,000 from Marco or other qualified vendor based on the quotes received which ranged from $10,437 to $14,550. Final purchase decision and vendor will be based upon verification of copy and service costs and system features. To place and file the EMS commission minutes of December 16th, 2014. That is all.
There should be, I don't know if we want to pull it on the copier, that the money comes from the capital fund position on the issue sheet, so do we need to pull it off? Can I turn it over?
I think that was part of the final recommendation.
It was part of the finance recommendation, so just noted that the funds will be transferred from the 2014 part treasury budgeting capital branch of funds.
Okay.
And that was issued on the original issue sheet as well.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve? So is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Yakup Rad?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Hoggatt?
Yes.
Vanslo?
Yes.
Morsette?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is Public Works Committee update and presentation by Lighting Matters Gray Bar on LED lighting. Mr. Zuli.
This evening, we have a couple gentlemen, Paul Mourning from Gray Bar and Phil Miller from Lighting Matters, district of an update and some, a presentation on our LED streetlight conversion project.
Good evening. Hello. Let me see if I can get this to work. I'm going to set my timer so I don't go over my allotted time slot here.
Yeah, because the hook will come out and get you.
Yeah.
Gets too long.
So the purpose of this presentation is to just share with you where we are with the design part of this project. We're finishing things up right now. So, you know, it looks like things are working out very nicely. So the goals that we went into this with, you want to hand up? I do have some printed, some printed copies of this presentation and there's some support material at the back. Couple people might have to share. But the project goals were to replace your existing HID street lighting and parking lot fixtures with LED fixtures. And that will lead to saving energy, reduce your maintenance costs, of course. And we also want to make sure we meet all the recommended lighting levels. And we also want to improve your quality of lighting. And probably most importantly to you, we want to save money. So the fixture that we decided upon after looking at a few different alternatives, this is a GE fixture. This is called a Cobra Head, and that just refers to the style. Cobra Head is a term that's used in lighting industry. It's kind of the typical roadway fixture you've seen driving everywhere. I do have a sample of fixture that we would be looking to replace. This would be, this fixture would replace basically all the existing roadway fixtures. There's 360 some odd fixtures, roadway fixtures, I believe. The only difference would be some of them, most of them will be this wattage, the 105 watt. There'd be some that would be less wattage, but they would still be the same housing, same size. So it's a well-made fixture. And then this on top is where you can have a control point, and I'll get into that later in the presentation, what that does. We can turn it on if you want, but it's going to be pretty bright.
Yeah.
But I think I'll leave it here with Tom if he wants to keep it, so maybe we'll stop by and see it on if you want.
And it'll sit on the current light poles?
Yeah, so they'll just be a one-for-one retrofit.
No pole replacements?
No pole replacements. No, that's, that was kind of the one assumption moment.
That one's free, right? Because it's out of the box?
Well, if you buy through. It might be if you buy, if you decide, buy all of them. They might give you that one. You'll have to talk to Paul about that. And then the parking lot, there are a few parking lots, relatively few compared to the roadway. Most of your parking lots are typical, what we call shoebox fixtures, is a rectangular parking lot fixture. The other one, in the library, you do have some, you've probably seen them, you have some fixtures with domes on them. So if you want to keep that look, this is what that, this library lot fixture is. Now, this one wouldn't glow on top. We can't, because of the way that codes are written now, it's generally not, not possible to have uplaid in exterior fixtures like that. And you generally don't need, you don't, it doesn't really do anything, so it doesn't add to the overall lighting quality. And this is probably the important thing to you. Talking about payback, now this is just simple payback, not looking at any type of interest rate or anything. This is just assuming the interest rate is zero. In reality, you know, it'll be a little bit higher at least, so these paybacks would be a little bit better. But this is a payback, this is assuming a one-for-one replacement for all these fixtures. So you can see basically the higher the wattage, the better the payback, and that's kind of a general rule across the lighting industry. And that's simply because you pay about the same for the new fixture to replace a 400-watt fixture, as you do to replace a 150-watt fixture. That's just the economics of it. And then the annual energy savings and maintenance. So, and actually, in this project, maintenance is making of a big portion of the savings just when we look at what it takes to replace the light bulbs, the bulbs in your existing fixture, replace a ballast, you know, it is quite costly when you look at it. And then, oh, there's a note down there says that payback for the 250-watt high-pressure sodium roadway fixtures, that would improve the 3.9 years. On Stage Line Road, we can actually, we don't actually need all the fixtures we have out there, so we can actually just disconnect some of the existing ones. And, you know, whether or not you want to leave the poles there or take them down, that would be up to you. But, you know, calculate, our calculations show that you have plenty of light even if you, on the one stretch, if you go about every other fixture, you get rid of, it's getting rid of like 30 fixtures altogether. And this is a look at the savings and payback from the total, for the total project. So, you know, the roadway fixtures are definitely, you know, where your bank or your buck is, and that's what pays back. It's just because parking fixtures, they just don't have the economy of scale. A parking fixture costs about three to four times as much as a roadway fixture, even though they have the same sort of light engine. It's just that, you know, GE probably makes hundreds of thousands of roadway fixtures in a year compared to only, you know, tens of thousands of parking lot fixtures, so. And then, so the all fixtures, that is if you do everything at once, 4.1 year payback. And the control system, this would be a wireless control system. You could put this little module on every, that's what this is. You'd put this little module on every fixture and it creates a mesh network. So the advantage to this is, you know, most of the time when you have your roadway fixtures on, especially in certain roads, there's no one there. You know, there's, especially when it's late at night in the more rural areas, you know, it's just lighting the road. There's no, there's no cars coming by. What we really want is to just turn the lights on when, when cars or pedestrians are coming by. So this would allow us to do that. It would allow us to control each fixture individually. It would allow us to dim them down when they're not, when there's no traffic or no pedestrians. And it would allow, it'd also allow you to see what that fixture is doing, so you could get information back. You would tell, would tell Tom, you know, hey, this fixture's not working, and it would give him the exact location, you know, to the point where he could put up a little map based on Google Maps and it would show him exactly where. There's a short little video here that explains how this works. It's only like two minutes.
Get more with GE's LightGrid outdoor wireless lighting control system. A groundbreaking approach to street and roadway lights. It all starts with a LightGrid node which collects data and sends it to a wireless gateway. The node and gateway essentially speak to each other, transferring specific streetlight usage and performance data via cellular or ethernet backhaul to a GE provided or customer-hosted server. This makes the data readily accessible to municipalities through a web-based interface that can be hosted remotely. Authorized personnel like you can use this information to control metering per light pole, so you only pay for what you use. You can control maintenance with quicker or efficient upkeep through smarter scheduling and faster responses. You can control output with precise dimming schedules based on need. And as we move further down the road, LightGrid can serve as the foundation for your community's cellular Wi-Fi and analytics extensions. With GE's LightGrid outdoor wireless lighting control system, you get the right light at the right time. For more information, visit ge lighting dot com slash LightGrid.
That gives a kind of a vague overview, but I think it gives a good idea of what the system is capable of in broad terms. We're still evaluating, you know, the cost of all these items. We have a pretty good idea of the cost of the fixtures and, you know, and we're trying to, we'll work with Tom to decide how the budget should be spent and, you know, we'll work closely with Paul to, and then we'll make recommendations on what areas we think you should pursue first, you know, what's the low-hanging fruit, and what's the best way to invest your money. Are there any questions or comments?
Yeah, when you appeared in front of the Public Works in, I think it was late November?
Yeah.
I asked you for the figures on the cost and you said you would have them.
Yes, we actually can pass them out if you. Thank you.
Thanks.
You know, just, what does each fixture cost?
So the, let me go back. The, the main roadway fixture, the one we'll be doing the bulk of the work, this comes in around $360 per fixture, you know, plus or minus.
That's the pole and the light that are integrated?
That's just, that's just the replacement head itself.
Okay.
So, yeah, you would be using your existing poles.
Okay.
So, I mean, there's.
That includes wireless control system?
No, that wireless control system, we're still looking at pricing for that, but the pricing that we got and used in that spreadsheet, that's about 160, I think it's $167 per node. So it is, it appears to be somewhat pricey. And, you know, we're still trying to see if we can get that down. And also in that number that I used for the control system, I have, I was pretty conservative with the number of gateways. That might be reduced. I have to do an actual, I have to lay that out yet and see. I am probably have to, would have to work with the GE rep and have help doing that. And so is this.
When can you have that information? Do you know when you can have that information by?
For the control system?
Yeah.
Well, you know, I'm, I'm going to work on it the rest of this week and, you know, my, the next thing with this project is we want to, we want to write up an actual report and then we'll have everything with recommendations written down and costs and.
Can, Tom, can, are you guys able to work together to get, I mean, was it feasible to get it ready for January 27th for a public works meeting?
That was the plan, yes.
That's what we planned at the last public works meeting, correct?
Yeah.
So are we able to do that still?
Yes.
Okay, then we'll just put it on that agenda then before we bring it to council.
Yep.
I have a question for Tom. When we talk about the streetlights, there's a good percentage of them that are serviced by XL Energy. This does not include those, is that correct? Talking about streetlights in the residential?
The one that we're dealing with tonight is city-owned streetlights.
Okay. But we have a percentage of them that are owned by XL Energy and they do the service, like in my neighborhood, it's XL Energy that change.
Those are company-owned.
Okay.
XL owns them, they maintain them, and they charge us so much a month for that particular light.
Do you happen to know the percentage wise that which are ours and which belong to XL? Do you know that, is it half of their fixtures in town are owned by XL and half are ours? Or don't you, do you have a clue?
We're talking about, you know, with city-owned streetlights and parking lots, lights, about 340.
Okay.
You know, that we're talking about with this report.
Okay.
Citywide, what we, you know, get from XL Energy, I don't have a count, I could, I could find that out.
I'm just trying to, because this, this could be a significant money saver and good use of our funding to get this going. The other question I had is when you have maintenance savings, Tom? So it shows a maintenance of about $15,000. So what does that mean, reduced cost in your?
It takes about, takes about an hour for, you know, with our bucket truck?
Yep.
Two guys, you need a, you know, someone in the bucket, someone on the ground. High-pressure sodium bulbs have elements and parts. So when they get up in the wind, you know, they blow around. Generally, we get about 20,000 hours per light bulb is what they say, but generally up on the hill, we don't get that much because of the wind factor. I would say a good estimate for streetlights are on 4,000 hours a year, average. So every, you know, four to five years, we need to replace bulbs. Ballast probably lasts a little longer than that. Ballast costs about, you know, $150 or so, bulbs are 20 or 30, so. There definitely is, and these, and part of our objective is to get a quality light, a company that has been in business a long time, has invested in research and development, and also to get the highest warranty that we can. I know several companies, I'm not sure about GE, but they're actually looking from five to seven, even possibly 10-year warranty on these fixtures. Don't know if that's possible, 10 years.
Well, I believe that you can get, you can, if you pay a premium, you can get it changed to a 10-year warranty.
But seven is common?
Well, I think five is still kind of the industry standard.
Nice try, keep trying.
There is one fixture that we were, that we were looking at, a Phillips fixture, that doesn't come with a standard 10-year warranty. It's just that that fixture, we just, it's still relatively new, you know, just not as comfortable with the fixture compared to these. And Gray Bar has a really good relationship with GE and, you know, not so, well, I won't say not so much, but it's not, not, and the relationship with Phillips is not as strong. I don't want to overstate it, but.
Just back to your question about, sorry, about your question about the warranty, I did speak with the GE rep today and confirmed about warranty. They do come with a standard five-year warranty, but seven years is, is yours as well. So they will enhance that up to seven years. 10 years is possible as well, depending on the total package and that type of thing. Sometimes they will require an upcharge to that, but it's not a whole lot. I mean, we're probably talking about $5 to $10 per fixture in that area.
If I recall, the lights are supposed to last, well, how did we put it in Public Works? Through our lifetime?
Yeah. 50 years or something. That's an old number.
Without burning out?
You're going to outlive me.
Well, you know, Tom, if you look at that, and we're going to have less, you know, hopefully those folks then could be doing something else.
Right.
And, I mean, our maintenance folks.
Yep.
Can I ask a quick question? Is this, is this total here, the total system cost, 349,000?
Yes.
What you're saying would cost us? Now, your math, the math doesn't add up unless I'm reading something. If you said 360 per head plus 167 for the wireless controls, 527 a head.
Mm-hmm.
And 340 heads that we're going to change out citywide is only 180,000.
Well, that is the material cost alone, so then there's also labor, a labor cost.
This isn't the final number, is it?
No, no, no. So the labor cost, you know, we're just estimating for labor, and labor, you know, is.
If you let me guess, your total without controls, Randy, it's 162, 420. Third column, stuck.
Yeah, if that's.
No, I know, I know, I'm looking at total system cost.
Yeah, the total system cost includes labor as well.
The lights in and.
So it's 350.
350 with controls. Yes, if you would, yeah, including the control system, yeah.
263 without.
We've been, we've been looking at this and working on this for, what, three to five years?
Mm-hmm.
And at least two. I think we've been talking about for a long time that we wanted to get a proposal so we can take a look at it, and it looks like we're pretty close. And we'll have it by the next February meeting, probably.
That's my plan. I know that's Tom's plan, right?
Can I just say one thing?
Sure.
With the installation and the labor costs, I did talk with Paul Mourning, Paul, about this, is in, another way to lower our installation costs is that we could use our city bucket truck, use one of our personnel and just have one electrician doing the installation of the fixtures. So I think just with the, you know, our bucket truck and one of our employees, I think we can.
Good.
Reduce that cost.
Okay. Looking at payback without controls at 4.1 years?
Mm-hmm.
Payback with controls is 4.1.
Yeah, and that's, and that's just because the control system itself is, you know, quite expensive in this case compared to the rest of the system. The other thing.
Makes you wonder if you want the controls.
Well, the, the other thing I would say is we always are a little bit conservative when we, we really have to almost guess on the savings that a control system will give you, because we don't know the actual usage. And so I used, I assumed that the fixtures would save 60%, which sounds like a lot, but we've actually seen that that can, that can happen. But in reality, you might save more than that. You might find, the thing about LEDs is they don't, they're not just on or off. You can dim them down. So, you know, even if you don't like having your fixtures.
You're spending $50,000 for five, for a half a year.
Yep.
Payback.
Yep.
I don't know if that's a good payback for me.
Yeah.
But, you know, that's just.
Yeah.
Preliminary figures. If I was to look at that right now, I wouldn't get the controls.
Yeah, and that's the other thing, we can, you can always add the control system later. You can wait till it comes down because these, that module literally just plugs in. It's like a seven-pin receptacle.
I think the controls would have to give me another year payback is.
Yeah.
That would be me.
The fixtures are adapted, so you can actually take this, you know, the top of the fixture, you can put a cap on there if you want the controls, you can just plug it in and later date. So that's a very good point, Rich.
Okay, yeah.
One other thing about the GE is that you can get this option and it's ready to go if you decide to do the wireless.
But we can do partial controls too, right?
There's other things you can do too. You could, you could just get a simpler photocell and, and have the, have it controlled with that, and that would probably be, you know, at least half as much.
Well, like for downtown, we could just do downtown and it's, looks like you can add Wi-Fi.
Mm-hmm.
So you could have a downtown Wi-Fi network running off the light poles. That'd be pretty cool, right?
Yeah. You know, there's, those are things that we'll have to work out to see what, how you want to proceed.
Anyone have any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's finally coming together after. Okay, next item on the agenda is the discussion and possible action on collective bargaining agreements for 2015, 2016 for the Hudson Police Patrol Officers Association. It was Randy and I and City Attorney Steve Weld and Devin reached an agreement with the Hudson Patrol Officer Unit, and the proposal is the agreement for calendar years 2015, 2016. The officers will receive a 1% effective 1-115 and a 1% increase on seven, or one, 7-115 and a 2% wage effective 1-116. The only other compensation is there a dollar an hour increase for certified training officer during the time he or she is training a new officer. So I believe, Marty, it's 40 hours that's required to train a new officer?
As you see, the certification for FTO training, you have to have a 40-hour certification program.
And how long do we take with the training of a new patrol officer that comes on and we have someone ride with them, they're together with a training officer for?
It can be anywhere from 45 days to 90 days, just depending on how long it takes for the person to get trained. If it's someone that is familiar with Wisconsin law, or we've already trained part-time before, it's a shorter amount of time, usually around that 40 to 45 days. If it's somebody that's never worked in Wisconsin before, it's going to take the whole 90-day period just to get them up to our statutes and how we do things in the city of Hudson. So it'll take them much time.
So that's a dollar an hour for the training officer? We agree to that.
But only when, but only when they're training a new officer. So it'll only be during that time period.
So my one question would be, how is this in relation to the rest of city staff?
We had a 2%, we authorized a 2% raise for 2015.
And 16 hasn't been determined yet.
And we don't do 50 or 16 yet.
Okay.
We did a 4% for supervisors for 2015 and 2% for other people.
Okay.
So we're right in line.
The changes were all language changes that were already, things that were being done that we just cleaned up.
Randy, you have anything else to add?
No, I thought it went pretty, pretty quick this time.
We will, we're going to set up a meeting with sergeants. We have to meet with them. They don't have the same bargaining rights as the, we will meet with them later this month, and hopefully by the first meeting in February, we'll have an agreement with the sergeants as well.
I'll move to approve the collective bargaining agreement with the Hudson Police Patrol Officers Unit for 2015 and 2016.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the Big Brothers, Big Sisters, thank you for your Mentor Day proclamation. It's a proclamation from the city of Hudson for Big Brothers, Big Sister, thank you, your mentor day. Whereas every child deserves to achieve success in life and whereas mentoring through Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Northwestern Wisconsin provides children facing adversity with strong and enduring professionally-supported relationship that change their lives for the better forever and whereas children with a mentor set higher goals for themselves and whereas children with a mentor are less likely to use drugs and alcohol and whereas children with a mentor are more likely to reach higher levels of education and. in our community as mentors, and whereas two thousand fifteen marks the thirteenth year of celebrating January as National Mentoring Month, and whereas I, Alan D. Burchill, Mayor of the City of Hudson, do hereby proclaim January fifteenth as Big Brothers, Big Sisters, thank you Mentor Day in the City of Hudson, and call upon citizens, citizens to thank their mentors and those who made a positive on them while growing up. So, that is a proclamation that we're making tonight, and we have a proclamation, or we have an appointment to the Hudson Fire and Police Commission. I've appointed Tricia Christiansen from eight oh two Eighth Street to serve the remainder of the term until April of two thousand fifteen. She's replacing Peter Post, who passed away.
Any motion on that?
No, this is an appointment, just a notification who I appointed. Tricia owns Christiansen Creative over on Fourth Street, a businessperson in the community.
On the proclamation, is that really a word, a positive?
I just copied, there is an offense.
That's really not a word.
It's an action, it's an action verb.
It's an action verb, okay.
Is it really?
No.
I just took a copy and paste of what they sent.
I thought I was unintelligent or something, so I didn't say anything.
We'll get it fixed.
We'll get that, we'll get that.
Sorry, didn't catch it on first read.
I thought it was a trick, I thought it was a trick, I just had to check.
Council members, anything else from the, for future agenda items? City Attorney, City Administrator? A motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
For adjourn, thank you.